Welcome, everybody. Welcome to the March 18th, 2019 regular board meeting. At the board table to the right, we have Ross Harris and Mike Miller. And to my left, we have Sean Heitman and Ben Fletcher. To my right, we have Paula Gumbel, who is our board secretary. And to my left is Darren Shutey, the superintendent. And we have one student representative tonight. Jane Ragland is on your side. If you would, stay with me, the mission statement.
We develop learners who have the knowledge, skills, and positive mindset to successfully pursue a meaningful future through personalized learning experiences.
And if you're able, we'll say the question.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. We are a republic for which there is justice, one nation under God, and in this world with liberty and justice for all.
If anybody would like to speak to cut public comment tonight, there is a signup sheet at the table here, this pink sheet. Okay, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are. All right, I have two quick changes under personnel. Under the appointments area, Courtney Simons, if you could remove that from the agenda, that'll probably come back at a future meeting. And then, we're going to add a resignation that I received today for Jolene Kubli, who is the music teacher at Franklin and Rogers. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries five to zero. Andrew, do you have any? Okay, the consent agenda. We have... Any questions on the March 4th board meeting? See, we already have the personnel updates that Anthony presented. Inter-agency agreements and contracts. We have several tonight. Are there any questions? Open enrollments. We have three out for 1819 and 13 out for 1920. Are there any questions on open enrollments? Bills, any questions? We have a donation tonight. I think thanks are in order from 100 Women and Earl Barlow for the $14,000 towards the band uniforms. And then, we have the monthly financial report. Quite a bit there. Are there any questions on the finances?
Paulette, any comments about the financial report? Where we are versus your expectations to budget?
No, not... We're going to talk a lot about the certified budget presentation. But no, nothing out of the ordinary.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
It's moved. Second.
Harris Fletcher, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Do we have anyone to speak tonight?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. All right. Pat, you're up.
So, Mr. Johnson just pulled up. He had his first day of ladies golf today, so...
Cold day for golf.
Yeah, indoor putting, I guess, today. Be a little soggy out there.
That's called miniature golf.
Okay, from my right, I got Crane Johnson, instructional coach. We have the teacher, Ms. Gilbertson, Christine Gilbertson, myself, Pat Ryle, and then instructional coach Jen O'Neal, and associate principal Dave Glenn. And coming up shortly would be Lucas Johnson, another teacher who has started Define STEM. Well, early this year, Dr. Shutey brought this idea up of how to kind of spark our project-based learning unit, and Define STEM seemed to be the most financially feasible and to align with our Chromebooks as well. So, what that is, as you can see, it's... Define STEM is a K-12 project-based learning solution that provides engaging, authentic lessons built around careers. And that was a big part, obviously, moving forward, being college career-ready. Every project that they do offers careers that match up to those projects. And the flexibility for the teachers, I'll let them kind of explain that because they did some changing with their units and how that goes, and then how it's personalized to our student needs.
So, once the decision was in, Define STEM, we really kind of took a three-tiered approach with our staff. At the end of October, at a professional learning day, one of the Define STEM employees, John Joe, came and introduced Define STEM to our staff, kind of gave them some background, what they could expect from the system, and how it would work with standards and what they're doing already in their classes with project-based learning. Then, in December, excuse me, they sent Dave, I don't remember Dave's last name, another... I think he's into the administrative side of Define STEM, but he's got experience as a classroom teacher, as a principal, as a superintendent, now he's working with Define STEM. But he really walked our staff as a whole through a Define STEM unit. So, they really had an opportunity to experience what that looks like, how it feels as a student. And they had an opportunity to create a project, present the project, and work through the whole thing. I mean, albeit, it was fairly shortened for time. We did it in a couple of hours versus what students would experience over several days. And then, in January, Megan from Define STEM came back and gave us, our staff, a follow-up professional learning opportunity where they really were able to get support from her, as they met mostly within their grade-level teams and their PLCs to identify where they were in that planning of projects and kind of be able to move that forward.
Dave kind of talked about this already. If you can go down to one more slide. So, this is just how we got to experience. This was our first kind of experience part after the introduction with Dave. He tasked all of our groups to, sort of like they were the students, so he gave them... The backpack designer was the career. And so, this is just kind of showing you how our teachers dove into that in this picture, too. Mr. Stoner is explaining how they use that backpack to create transport water for third-world countries. So, all of the groups were kind of given the task, and then they got to decide how they were going to use their backpack.
And then on... Sorry. Then on the next slide, it shows that Mrs. Callahan, right there. We also had our teachers do a gallery walk to kind of see the different ideas of how to transport the water to the different countries for the third world.
So, how we use Define STEM in our classroom. So, we, as a seventh-grade literature team, sat down. We looked at our standards, what the Iowa Core wanted us to teach, and what we wanted to use Define STEM, or how we wanted to use Define STEM to get there. We looked through the projects that were involved with Define STEM, trying to figure out what was a good match with our students. We came up on the topic of healthy ice cream and how we could make an ice cream healthy enough to be incorporated into school lunch. So, ice cream, school lunch, definite connection with the middle school students. We started by actually looking at how ice cream is made and what the process is. Then, we went into what makes it healthy, what could make it healthy. We talked about nutrition standards and school lunch standards. Our culminating activity is the one that's shown there in my classroom. And we actually made ice cream. And that in itself was just quite the project. The class that Dr. Shutey was able to come and look at, we had to break it down as far as, this is a measuring cup, this is a measuring spoon. These are skills that our students don't have, that they need to have. This is real-world reading and real-world application. Ultimately, our project was geared towards making a slideshow that would have scrolled in the school cafeteria during lunchtime about nutrition and healthy ice cream. Due to missed school days, we were not able to kind of get to that final point. But I really feel like the kids were excited about it. They got into it. We also had the freedom with Define STEM to add our own kind of spin on things. For example, we made a slideshow that we went through with our kids of things that they commonly eat, like Takis, and seeing if those would be allowed in school lunch, and why or why not. And so, then they had to evaluate that information, if given a nutrition label, versus the school lunch standards. So, they learned a lot. I feel that it was really useful information as well.
In my composition team, I teach eighth-grade composition. And we have a persuasive writing unit that we thought would be a great fit for one of the Define STEM projects, which was a tour operator. And the way that Define STEM rolled that out was through a tour to Denmark, which we looked at. And as Mr. Ryle talked about, there's a highly customizable aspect to Define STEM. And so, we decided to change that to encouraging people to come visit Marshalltown and to encourage our students to take a positive persuasive view of why people should come to Marshalltown, either as tourists or to work and live. And so, the product that our students were able to create, we actually gave them choice. One choice was a travel blog that they created. Another was a 60-second commercial. And then, we also gave them the opportunity to create a website, which was sort of based on the marshalltown.org website. And so, really, really real-world application of the projects. And the other thing that we noticed, just from our students, was the perception that they were able to kind of take of their own community to really start to see the positives. Because as an eighth grader, you are limited in your experience, and sometimes you don't always want to take a positive approach to your town. But when they were encouraged to do so, we saw kids creating hashtags like #MtownPride and things like that, that they started to experience that persuasive element of the writing that we want them to see, and then the real-world aspect of that, too. So, overall, you know, the buy-in, I think, from students is what we're always trying to do. And I definitely saw that through their experiences with this.
May I have any questions? I'd love to hear what the great ideas on why Marshall... Why visit Marshalltown, students? You got any of them?
You know, we... Eighth graders love food. There was no shortage of looking at Marshalltown from a food perspective, the activity perspective as well. And you know, one of the great... The aquatic center, the bike trails. One of the great things that came up, just through our conversation, I think, as we look forward to next year, what this project could look like, would be to actually bring in more people from the community who have that real-world tie and say, you know, how do we encourage more and more people to be our city's workhorse? Because it's a nice sight to see that, which is awesome.
So, what all courses is this being used in? When I first saw this, my assumption was this is a science class thing. But it sounds like we have at least composition and...
All of them.
All of them, okay.
The expectation right now is to do one to two projects before the end of the year, because obviously, we didn't get trained until mid-January. So, the expectation is that they do one to two projects by the end of the year. And then, next year, obviously, we're going to hit the ground running.
Then, do you guys just pick and choose where it might fit? Or do they have guidance that this fits real well with a math class, or this fits real well with an English class?
Really, yeah. Go ahead.
Define STEM has done a really good job of breaking down these are the projects and these are the standards in which content areas that they most easily apply. But I think, you know, as Lucas alluded to earlier, is the customizable part of it. A lot of it just gives teachers a jumping off point, or a PLC to figure out, hey, this may not tie as strongly to our standard here, but if we customized it or took this aspect and applied it, we can use it with our standards here. Really gives a kind of a template as we shifted our project-based learning more from a standalone, set aside in its own world or own space, to a classroom. It provided a really nice bridge, or has provided a really nice bridge, so...
I think also, there's opportunity for some cross-curricular things to happen. I know of a couple of teams who are talking about that already for next year, how they can partner together and do one of the projects based on their career and have it running in both of their classrooms. So, the kids are essentially creating one or two products, but they're working on the same project for both classes. So, that's exciting, too.
You know, a pretty good... I just thought of something. A pretty good example would be the backpack project that our staff went through. I mean, it wasn't just, hey, create a backpack to carry water. I mean, it could be, hey, create a backpack that a Revolutionary War soldier would have. And they would have to, you know, think about, what are the materials that were available? What are the, you know, what are the purposes and the usefulness for it? I know there was a seventh-grade lit group that was looking at outsiders. So, what would the two sides, you know, the two competing factions of the outsiders, the Greeces and the...
Socias.
Socias, yeah. What kind of backpack would they have? What would be the features that that backpack would need? And so, then, the science side of it, you know, there was, you know, the water or the, you know, solar charging devices and stuff like that. So, I mean, even something just that simple as a backpack really brought into a lot of design elements for any topic.
And also, different cultures. They talked about the different cultures and their respect for the backpacks. You know, it could be a $20 backpack in the United States, where in Japan, they talked about how they really look for the quality, and it could be up to $300 for the backpack. So, looking at the audience and the culture that they're also designing that backpack for.
How many students were involved this time around? All the eighth graders?
And then, all the seventh graders.
Everybody, okay, great.
Can they have fun?
We had a lot of fun.
I mean, ice cream, how can it not be fun?
We thought we should make ice cream here, but no.
So, I guess, I didn't catch it. Were you able to make it healthy enough to...
Um, we didn't quite get there. We decided, you know, what the students thought, it's okay to give up the healthy aspect as long as it tastes really good.
Of course.
So, you know... It was kind of like, when I first saw and heard this, it was like a lining of all the stars for me because first and foremost, my mind was wrapping around this college and career-ready, and how do we make that relevant at levels other than just the high school? And knowing at the middle school, as you had alluded to, you know, we no longer have family and consumer sciences we knew it. We no longer have industrial tech as we know it or knew it, those of us that are old enough to know it. And so, how do we create some of that learning and those opportunities without having those courses and doing it in a cost-effective way? And yet, we have heavy access to technology throughout the district, and particularly at the middle school and high school with one-to-one. So, this was a perfect marriage of bringing in high-quality digital units that were predicated on jobs and careers that are out there, some of which are Midwest-oriented or even Marsh Town-oriented, for that matter. And yet, doing it in such a way to make it much user-friendly on the teacher end, if they so chose. And that's been part of the challenge. Anytime you initiate a big change like project-based learning, and we're, what, in year five or four of the iter... How that's evolved over time, you always have early adopters of that, and then you have people that are kind of on that fence that just need a little help or nudge or confidence with that kind of change. And then, you have people that are somewhat resistant to it. And this appeared to be a fairly teacher-friendly way to either give them everything that they needed, if that was the case, or, as you guys have said, to spin off, adapt, customize, or even generate new ideas that aren't part of that, but are what we're striving for in terms of providing kids with meaningful and engaging activities, and particularly if they can engage the technology that we have invested heavily into. So, it's been exciting for me to see and hear about what's happened, you know, which I'm sure will just be the tip of the iceberg or where things will go. And it's exciting that the middle school is interested in adopting that.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, we have our student school board representative update, our sole student tonight.
Hi, everyone. Tonight, it is just me because Jocelyn and America are both at Science Bound, which they plan on talking to you more about at an upcoming meeting. So, because last week was spring break, my update's a little bit shorter tonight. So, first, I talked to you at the last board meeting about National Honor Society delivering books to Franklin Elementary School. Since then, we have delivered books to Hoagland, Rogers, Anson, and St. Francis, and deliveries to Fisher and Woodbury are being planned. More than 30 NHS members have helped so far, and at each school, we have taken about 45 minutes to read with all the students. At Hoagland, as a group of the NHS members left, one boy ran up to us and hugged us all, thanking him for his new book. So, it's definitely been fun and rewarding. Another exciting thing is Jena Hernandez was selected for all-state and state individual speech. Next, spring sports have begun. Soccer, tennis, golf, and track have all started their practices, and their meet will begin in the next couple of weeks. And then, finally, next Friday, the 29th, and next Saturday, the 30th, at 7:00 p.m., is the spring play performances. So, the show is Sherlock Holmes, and the cast would love to see many of you there. Thank you. Any questions?
And the Saturday night performance is right after the grand opening of Roundhouse Phase Two. So, it's an easy walk right across the...
The 30th.
Yep.
Thanks, Jane.
Good evening. I'm Dan Toronas, dean of students at the high school. And I have with you two great, great, great students at Marshalltown High School, seniors, ready to graduate. This is... Don't tell me. Gosh, don't. Lemus. Sometimes I have to start with the last name. Juliana Ibar-Lemus and Fatima Negrete Perez. They have three names. I struggle with that. But I've known these two in our Health Careers Club the past couple of years. I think you may have started maybe three years ago. But the purpose of our Healthcare Careers Club is simply to give students some experiences outside the classroom, which might lead them to making a decision on a career pathway in healthcare. We do have a video, I believe. Is there a video that's going to be shown? There it is. Those are all activities that we have participated in in the last couple of years. So, I think to begin with, we could allow Fatima and Juliana just simply to share why they're involved in the Healthcare Careers Club. And then, we would like to propose that we be allowed to attend an out-of-state trip to Chicago, University of Chicago Medicine in Chicago. Would you go first, Juliana?
Yeah.
Use that microphone.
Is it on? So, what was the best experience or activity that I have been involved in? I think that the best activity that we have gone to would be the cadaver lab in Des Moines. It was very cool. I went last year, which was the first year, I think, that you did it. Yeah, and then I went again this year, and like every single time, I'm amazed, like just to see the body open and like, just great.
Crazy.
I think you're losing Anthony back there.
That was at Des Moines... I'm sorry, go ahead. It was cool, huh?
Yeah, it was really cool.
Des Moines University opened up their anatomy lab to us in second year in a row. And it is, it's a great experience for the students to see firsthand, you know, what they're learning about in the books.
First of all, I definitely agree with Juliana on the cadaver lab. That was a very unique experience, unlike anything that I've ever done. So, that was a lot of fun. And also, why I'm involved in the Healthcare Careers Club. At the beginning of my high school career, I didn't really know what I wanted to do for my future. But as the years went on, I realized that I'm very passionate about health and nutrition. So, I hope to one day become a registered dietitian. So, being through the program, it's helped us explore different careers and just get to learn a lot more about healthcare in general.
Thank you. And so, what we are planning for is a trip to Chicago, to University of Chicago, U. Chicago Medicine, and participate in an activity on Friday. The folk there are putting together for us a very, very nice day of learning through hands-on experiences and tours and just conversations with medical staff there. We do an out-of-state... Most of our, actually, one-third of our students are involved in Trio, upward bound and first-generation college students. McFarlane Clinic in Europe will be sponsoring part of this, part of this trip. So again, asking if we might have permission for 42 students to attend this activity in Chicago on April 11th.
Are there any questions?
The big jump in students, is that, is your club jumping or just the participation in this trip?
That's a great question. We have more ninth graders involved now. I think the word is out that we, we do take a end-of-the-year trip. And so we're going to kind of see how this, how this plays out. But they, they did meet, they met all requirements, participated in the same way that our very mature seniors and juniors, the same manner. So this will be a different experience, I think, having the younger kids participate. So we'll see.
Yeah.
Well, another thing that's kind of exciting in this arena is that we're really looking at Iowa Veterans Home and possibly getting a registered apprenticeship program going with them in CNA and, and maybe even pre-apprenticeship in a variety of health-related fields. So to see those kind of numbers of interest and, you know, to put in extra effort with the club will lend itself well to...
Absolutely.
...that potential.
The Veterans Home, along with McFarlane Clinic, have been a major supporter of our club in allowing their experts to come in and share their experiences. But we are also in the making, putting together a, a unique club for those students who are pursuing medical school. So McFarlane Clinic, their medical staff are putting together an experience for past graduates and those currently in high school who are going to be heading toward medical school or an advanced practice license. So that's exciting. That's also in the making.
Nice. Any more questions? May I have a motion to approve the out-of-state field trip to the University of Chicago School of Medicine from April 11th to the 13th, 2019, as presented?
Go ahead.
Second.
Fletcher Harris.
Hi, man.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries five to zero. Have fun, you guys. I can't wait to hear about it.
Thank you.
Was Hyman Miller?
Sorry about that.
Miller.
Oh.
Oh. It was one from this side and one from that side. I was doing my Ross imitation, so.
I have Josh, the, the expert clicker with us. So tonight, we're here to share our first attempts at creating a digital learning plan for Marshalltown Community Schools. This has been a group effort that Josh Wesley and David Stanfield, who's not here with us tonight, he's our instructional design specialist, and Paula Johnson, who's this year serving as our seven through 12 instructional coach focused on technology, and Pam Brewer-Michael, one of our CPDLs, and I think Erica too, gave a little bit of input on some of the drafts that we had going. So just as kind of a background, in our strategic action plan in Goal One, that's focused on student achievement, one of the outcomes that we want to accomplish by 2023 is to have a living digital learning plan that we use as kind of guidance in how we allocate resources, how we make decisions, the work that we're attempting to do as we integrate digital learning for all of our students and staff. And so we've been talking about this for probably over a year, I'd say, about what we want this to look like. And last fall, I believe it was, the state of Iowa, I think I'm getting that timing right, yeah, the state of Iowa released a digital learning plan to encompass public education and, and school districts in the state to use as kind of a guidance. And so we leaned heavily on that plan and then personalized it to our current reality. So what you'll see before you is 20-some pages of an introduction, and then we have our plan divided out into the four areas that you see here. And each of us took a lead on, five areas, sorry. Each of us took a lead on one of the different areas, and we created kind of a where are we right now, look at it, and then where do we hope to go when it comes to digital learning. And so we will be vetting this too with our school administrators in the next couple of weeks, and then bring it back to you in a couple of weeks for approval as an action item. So if you have input, and we'd love to hear it, because this is our, like I said, this is our first attempt at this. So my section that I talked about was the very first one, and we're not going to read all five sections to you, but just talking about leadership. And so one of the really important things, I think, was for us to sit and kind of reflect on, from the school board. You'll notice that you're listed, you made the book on page four. What is our current level of leadership at the school board level superintendent in terms of how we're integrating digital learning and technology into all the work we do for MCSD? And then we went through all of the user levels within the school district, including students. And we listed ways in which we are, have been in the past and are currently integrating technology. And then we went, and then at the end, you'll see there are four future goals and recommendations that we would kind of look at as a baseline. So these are things that we, we know, we maybe have stepped into and we're talking about. We've, you know, either appropriated money to make this happen, or we've given time for it to happen, and we want to improve and have it grow so that when we come back on an annual basis, we can give some kind of metrics on how we're doing to reach our future goals and recommendations. Section two is teaching with technology.
Okay. So in this section, we are focusing, of course, on what the teachers are doing in the classroom to integrate technology for their students. And of course, as one of our goals in our district is to have personalized learning, we need to make sure that teachers know how to properly integrate the tech tools. There's a bazillion of them that are out there. Some are better than others. But that's where teachers need to be taught how to integrate those technologies and use it with their strategies that they have in their classroom so that the kids are getting the best benefit as well as, as the teacher's using them appropriately. So as you go through, again, we have our current reality, which is that we have this, and now let's use it to the highest degree. And of course, our future goals and recommendations are to continue using PD and, and the coaches across all the buildings to be the ones to help the teachers to really integrate appropriately and accurately. And then if you go into the next section, which is the learning section, that's our students. So how are our students learning? How are they using the technology to, you know, improve their test scores, to improve their learning, to make those gains or those connections through college and career readiness that we're always talking about? So all these things, you know, working together, talking about digital citizenship and, and using, you know, all our STEM ideas. And our, our technology is so strong in our district, and that's one of the things that makes me so excited about being here, because we really can transform education in this district. We just need to know how to do it. And to, this document, I was so excited to be a part of, as Dr. Stevenson can tell you that, because really, this will, this is our draft, but we're, this will help us drive that technology for the future and transform our education system. So with, off with that. Back into assessment, which...
That was Dave's part. Okay, I'm going to pretend to be Dave right now. So section four was assessment. And mostly what you see there is kind of a laundry list of all the ways that we're currently using technology and using digital platforms to assess if our students are meeting standards, if they are, how they're performing compared to their peers on state or national assessments. And so some of those words up there should ring a bell with you, like our preschool kids or, or teachers, I should say, are using Teaching Strategies Gold, which is a, a state required tool. We've appropriated money in the last couple of years for Lexia Core 5, and to extend that into Power Up at sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. ST Math, you've heard us use quite a bit. It's a math supplement. And so if you scroll down, you'll see that's our current reality. And then Clarity, for those of you who maybe are newer on the board, Clarity is a online system. It's a, an assessment tool that we give, I think, around the second week of April or so. I believe Dave is, will be working with, with Andrew and the principals to push out to our patrons, the Clarity survey, and we have historical data on Clarity that shows like access at home for kids and their families, and then also some self-perception data that teachers and students have about their, their proficiency or their comfortableness, I suppose, with using technology to, to plan lessons and teach. And five is Josh.
All right. Well, I worked on the infrastructure section, which focused on high-speed connectivity for internet, data privacy and security, high-speed Wi-Fi access, some low-cost quality devices, which is dealing with the Chromebooks, digital citizenship, home internet access, and some quality digital uses. So following, following kind of the same format as the rest of the sections, we went through a little bit and discussed what is currently existing in Marshalltown, and then provided some future goals and recommendations, maintaining the infrastructure that we currently have, maintaining the devices that we currently have, establishing replacement cycles for the additional equipment. Also leveraged a lot of Clarity data for both teacher and student's perception of how well technology is working at Marshalltown and at home, as far as internet access, access to whiteboards and computers as they need them at school.
And the school board policies are in there too.
And the school, oh, yeah, and the policies. So we also went over responsible use policies, school board policies relating to student data, privacy and security, and how we can make sure or ensure that student data is in compliance with all federal regulations, that we need to be in compliance with the FERPA and COBA.
So the creation of a digital learning plan was one of our strategic objectives within the strategic goal under student achievement. And I guess I'm excited about it because it kind of, it has the opportunity, as Paula said, to set the course for how we can continue to create more meaningfully, meaningful and engaging learning experiences for students by using the significant technology that we have, thanks to the board's willingness to invest in that. But as we've said before, just because we have the technology doesn't guarantee it's going to change anything. It's how you use that technology. And so today's presentation, which wasn't purposely designed to be in conjunction with this, is one example of many. We know that the better that we can differentiate instruction for students who are at different places or even personalize it, the more beneficial that is for kids as well. So that's why we talk about the high-quality digital platforms that allow teachers to more easily do that by effective utilization of technology. And then as far as our operations go, which is kind of, I guess, more tied to Josh's arena, you know, how can we be more efficient and effective and improve the workflows and the productivity by utilizing technology versus just relying on human capital and people to do it? How do we blend those two better so that within each of our departments, we're working smarter and not harder? So it's exciting.
When I was going, when I was listening to this, what, what I, the way I was coming at it was, what sort of things do we want our students to learn so they can be better prepared for college or the workforce, right? And so what I, what I heard was kind of a real high-level, we're going to use technology a lot more in all these areas. And only one time in the 21 pages did I hear, here's something that we're actually going to expose them to. And I think you said it, you talked about coding in one of the sections, but that's the only place. And so when I think about the things with respect to all this money we've spent on Chromebooks and upgraded internet access and Wi-Fi, I think about the types of skills that kids need to perform well in the workforce, whether it is experience and proficiency with applications like Google Docs or Microsoft Office or basics of network topology so you can troubleshoot, you know, when you have a computer problem at work, or you can set up a Wi-Fi network at home, those kind of basic things that people, people need to know. Responsibility with your phone and social media. And so I might challenge, as you, this, go take this draft and dive down to the actual action plan, or here's what we're going to teach the kids, that you get that specific about what are the skills that kids need to perform better at the next level and make sure that they have exposure to, to those as well.
I agree. I, we didn't, as Dr. Shetty said, and plan to do this tonight when Miller went, but it was kind of interesting because the first thing that popped in my head when you said that was, I happened to be in Lucas Johnson's class when they were working on, on one of my no-office days. They were working on those group projects, and it was really interesting to see three middle schoolers working together. They're communicating, they're collaborating, they're compromising, they're dealing, regulating their emotions, they're staying on the websites that they're supposed to be on, right, on their devices. They're coming prepared. And then they were developing skills that I think unless we have intentionality, like you're saying, that that's a future recommendation of, how do you create a blog? How do you borrow images off the internet without copyright infringement? How do you, how do you check your, know who your audience is and create a brochure that would be relevant to them? Because, just because 13-year-olds like the Aquatic Center, how are you going to sell that to parents, right, in Marshalltown? So those were the kinds of things that they were talking about and the teachers were prompting them with. And that's what's been really awesome about having Paula and her role this year is that she's been able to take teachers from wherever they are with strategies or things they know and be able to fold in those tools underneath that make it engaging for kids. And we're sneaking in, like you said, skills that they need to have to be able to be employed, employable, and/or successful when they go to whatever college or post-secondary that they want. So, and I also think too that the state just recently released last fall, I think it was, optional computer science standards that we've been embedding in the work that we do with Project Lead the Way and grants that we're writing. But I love that that's out there for us because it gives something for us to say, yes, we, we expect this to be something that happens in fourth grade at keyboarding or digital citizenship when you're in sixth grade at this level. And so there'll be marked ways we can look at things throughout their time in Marshalltown and if they're getting it or not getting it. So maybe if we, are you, do I hear you saying maybe make those more bold and clear, the outcomes of what you want or what we want students to know and be able to do?
Yeah.
Okay.
I was really excited when I saw this and, when I went through the, the document. And I know it was a first stab at it, but I think it's fabulous. We just, it's really easy to just throw a computer in a classroom and start going. And this, I feel like you really captured it when you explained, I could see how excited you were about it, but I felt the same way when I read through it. So kudos. I'm looking forward to seeing it develop.
And I really liked too that Area Five is, Josh took half the pages almost in the, in the thing, but it, because that's the foundation, because without a highly functioning system...
And we're sneaking in, like you said, skills that they need to have to be able to be employed, employable, and/or successful when they go to whatever college or post-secondary that they want. So, and I also think too, that the state just recently released last fall, I think it was, optional computer science standards that we've been embedding in the work that we do with Project Lead the Way and grants that we're writing. But I love that that's out there for us, because it gives something for us to say, yes, we, we expect this to be something that happens in 4th grade at keyboarding, or digital citizenship when you're in 6th grade at this level. And so there'll be marked ways we can look at things throughout their time in Marshalltown, and if they're getting it or not getting it. So maybe if we, are you, do I hear you saying, maybe make those more bold and clear, the outcomes of what you want, or what we want students to know and be able to do?
Yeah.
Okay.
I was really excited when I saw this, and when I went through the, the document. And I know it was a first stab at it, but I think it's fabulous. We just, it's really easy to just throw a computer in a classroom and start going. And this, I feel like you really captured it when you explained, I could see how excited you were about it, but I felt the same way when I read through it. So, kudos. I'm looking forward to seeing it develop.
And I really liked too, that Area 5 is, Josh took half the pages almost in the, in the thing, but it, because that's the foundation. Because without a highly functioning system and responsive manpower, woman power to come out and fix things when they don't work, instruction stops for us. I mean, honestly, it's a big problem when we have, when the Internet goes down or when devices aren't working, especially when so many, like our state test is now online. Almost all of our curriculum that you help us buy, math and sciences, is presented digitally. And that's how the companies want us to purchase it instead of books, so.
It's also another career-building opportunity within that segment itself, even though Josh kind of takes care of that for us. But it is really important as kids learn that there is that part of it too, that has to be taken care of.
And I think, back to Mike's question, and it's, it's certainly within the plan. I mean, we, we have done so much in the past three years to build a stronger foundation of exposure and experiences that all kids are gonna get in, like, computer programming, for example, between the Project Lead the Way now being built out beyond 7th through 12, the K-12, and a big part of that at the elementary, or a part of it at the elementary school, being coding, in addition to the science. It's been further supported and supplemented with the three new people, the STEM-based bilingual teachers. We've added computer, computer programming class, basically app creator at the 8th grade level, which was, you know, that was one strand of Project Lead the Way that had been missing at the middle. So now we have that, all three tracks of pre-engineering, the biomedical and the computer programming, all represented in what all students get through 7th grade there. And so I, I think that our students are gonna have much, much, much more solid foundation, and probably more solid than most students in other places, before going to the high school where they can start to choose explicitly to take courses that are focused on different aspects of computer programming. And Lisa referenced also that we're in the midst of applying to the state for one of the six competitive grants to have Len Han become a computer science elementary school, essentially in a model school for the state, which, again, the, the plan would be to infuse more computer programming instruction, explicit instruction, as well as infuse more and more advanced coding than what the kids will have received through the elementary school up to that point. So, I think we're light-years better than where we were two, three years ago in that regard, and there will continue, hopefully, to be room for improvement, and hopefully position kids so that they can make good decisions in terms of what courses they wanna take in high school, especially if they're looking to pursue that type of job or career path as well.
Are there any more questions?
I think there's a lot of points of pride that can come out of this for.
Yeah. So we'll see you soon.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. That cord is not very flexible. All right. So we're gonna talk a little bit here about the certified budget for the 2019, 2020 school year, which is what I refer to as Fiscal Year '20. We did go through this presentation with the Finance Committee last week and spent a considerable amount of time reviewing it and, and talking about it. So, really, we have a twofold purpose here tonight. We need to discuss and establish and certify a property tax rate for the Fiscal '20 school year. And then we also need to look at setting our consolidated expenditures for all of our funds. This is a little bit different process than the line item budget process, which we will do, start working on this summer and into the fall. But really, this consolidated budget for all of the funds becomes kind of the framework upon which the line item budget will be built then, this summer and fall. We've talked some about certified enrollment and how that impacts our state aid funding. I think last meeting, we talked a little bit about the budget guarantee. But certified enrollment really serves as the primary driver of the funding that we receive. We are fortunate this year that the Legislature has approved a 2.06% increase in supplemental state aid for next year. The last couple of years, we've been going through this budgetary process without really knowing what our increase in state aid was at that time. So, we thank them for doing this early this year, so that we actually know what that is when we, when we publish our budget and certify. For Fiscal '20, they have, that 2.06% increase equates to $139 per student. So next year, next year, the regular program district cost per pupil will be $6,911.
You're on Slide 3, right?
Why is it not go, oh, because I have to, like, forward it, don't I? I'm driving. All right. Why is it not going on there, though?
It's going back here.
It's going. Usually I just click them out and go. Beginning, it's on the first slide. So can we go back to duplicating, or? Plan B. So if you wanna go down to the next one. I think that's where we kind of left off. So also, at the last meeting, our Board passed a resolution for the district to participate in the Budget Guarantee Program. And that's a program that we are on, because we had declining enrollment of about 93 students. And so the increase in the supplemental state aid of 2.06 did not, was not enough to offset that loss in funding due to declining enrollment. So, that resolution was passed last meeting to participate in that program. We are not alone in that program. Thirty-five percent of the districts will be on the Budget Guarantee next year, so we aren't the only ones that are, you know, that have experienced declining enrollment. The Budget Guarantee is 100% property tax, so it does have an impact on our budget. Tax rates are primarily a function of the district's taxable valuation of property. So a district with lower valuation per student is going to have a higher tax rate than perhaps a neighboring district might, that has more property value. Due to the operation of the Foundation Formula, a majority of the district's tax rate is not subject to local discretion, and we're gonna talk about that here in a few slides. So we, we go through this process of completing the aid and levy each spring in order to apply that school funding formula. And then that calculation determines how much of that funding will come from state aid, and how much of it will come from property taxes, from the local property taxes. So first, we wanna talk a little bit about property taxable valuation. This chart here will give you 15 years of history regarding the school district's taxable valuation that is supporting our funding and our students. We had a great increase for next budget year of over 5% in our taxable valuations between January '17 and January of '18. So that's really helpful. And some of our funds, you know, if you have more valuation, you're gonna have lower tax rates then. What we don't really know is what impact the tornado is going to have on valuations going forward. So I showed you this chart here on the bottom, which gives you the 10, five-year, 10-year, 15-year average. What I typically do when we do our forecasting is use that five-year rolling average. But for next year, due to the tornado, we are not going to use that 3.44%, because we are anticipating that, that valuations will actually go down some. But you can see for Fiscal '20, we had a 5% increase from $1,444 million to $1,998 million. So, that's, that was good. You can also see in that chart some of the tax increment financing, but I'm not gonna go, go too much into that right now. So this next slide will show you, and this is for Fiscal '19 school year, the current year that we are in. The Marshalltown School District has $191,000 of valuation supporting each student. That is the ninth lowest per student valuation in the state. We have 330 school districts. And so they range anywhere from between that $1.3 million, which is Okoboji, to the $173,000, which is Atamwa. The average, you can see there, the state average is about $345,000. So, our district's taxable valuation is about 55% of what the state average is. So this will have, you know, that does have an impact on property tax rates.
Do you know what drives that? I mean, do we have a lot of nonprofit property in Marshalltown, or?
Well, and Janelle and I were kind of looking at some Department of Management numbers a little bit ago. It looks like primarily the taxable valuation in Marshalltown School District is residential. But there's all sorts of different things that, that play into that, that taxable valuation. It's not the same as assessed valuation, because residential has the rollbacks, and we have the rollbacks for some other classifications also. For this year, and in this $191,000, that, that is a simple formula. If we take what our certified enrollment was this fall, and we divide that into the $1,091,97 million, then our per pupil taxable valuation for Fiscal '20 is actually $204,000. So it's going up a little bit, but we have fewer, fewer kids too, in that formula. And for Fiscal '20, the state average is $361,000. So as I said a little bit ago, the aid and levy is over 400 lines of formula. This is what we call the school funding formula. The Board of Education really has discretion over four areas of that. The first area that, that you are familiar with is the dropout prevention, modified allowable growth. Each year, I think it was back in December, the Board reviewed and approved the dropout prevention programming and funding for the upcoming year. There was a slight increase in the modified supplemental amount that was asked for. At that time, we were estimating that that was, that program would cost about $1.35. But due to the increased valuation, this came in just at about $1.29 per thousand. The second area there is the instructional support program. And this is actually referring to the part of that program that can be funded with an income surtax. Currently, the Marshalltown School District does not utilize the income surtax to fund any part of that program, but it can be funded through both, through either just property tax or a combination of property tax and surtax. The third area is the management fund. This is a use-limited fund, meaning that we can only levy taxes to pay for certain things. Those are primarily our property and liability insurance, any unemployment we have to pay, any judgments against the district, or early retirement benefits. So we, we assess that in the management fund to cover four specific things. And then the last section is the cash reserve levy, which we're gonna talk about more in-depth in, in another slide. So really, very limited discretion over that whole formula that provides the funding for our district. The next slide is the property tax rates by fund, and I think I printed this out and gave it to you, so you could easily read it. Down in the lower left-hand corner there, you will see the five funds listed that receive property tax revenues. The first one is the debt service. And obviously, we just started assessing a debt service levy in Fiscal '18 of 14 cents. Prior to that, there was no debt service levy on, because we are abating, we're primarily paying our debt service with sales tax dollars, or abating that. Next year, we have principal and interest payments of over $2 million for our debt service, but we will use sales tax money to abate all of that, except for about $200,000 of it. The next fund, Pearl, that's the Public Education and Recreation Levy. That is rate limited at 13.5 cents, and that was voted in some time ago, and has been 13.5 cents ever since then.
Yeah, that's funds that we use for playground improvements, primarily on our end, and then the city accesses a portion of that for park and rec.
Yep.
Only 13.5 cents.
That is the code limit. That's the limit in Iowa code. Physical plant and equipment levy, PEPAL, we call it. This also is rate limited. Iowa code says that you can, if you have voter approval, assess $1.34 for a voter-approved PEPAL. The district currently uses 67 cents of that. So we have voter approval to levy about half of what we could. The other 33 cents is approved by the Board annually through this process. So if you add the 33 cents and the 67 cents, that's where we come up with the $1.
So we could go up to $1.67?
Yes. With voter approval.
Yeah.
Yep. And PEPAL, physical plant and equipment levy, obviously, we use that a lot for physical plant and equipment.
And computers.
And computers. Yep, we use, use that for some computers. The management fund, we spoke about in a previous slide, those four different uses, and that has varied over time. The recommended property tax rate for Fiscal '20, as you can see by sliding over to the right side of the chart, is $18.33 per thousand for all five of those funds combined. This is a 1.9% increase. This is a 1.9% increase in, 1.9% recommended increase in the property tax rate for the school district.
Just that, the general fund at the bottom there, that's what you were talking about earlier, the purely formulaic.
Yes, yep. And we're going to go into more detail on the general fund here in a further slide, too. So.
Well, and I think it's important to note that that 1833 mirrors where we were at in fiscal year '16. And you'll remember between '16 and '17, the spring prior to my arrival, I think Mr. Barts had recommended that we decrease because we were generating a lot of cash that could only be used for at-risk purposes, and it wasn't getting spent out. So we were building up a lot of carryover, too much carryover in that regard. So that was why that dropped.
The next slide we're going to look at is the consolidated tax rates. And I always think it's interesting when we put all the pieces of the puzzle together because, as you're aware, there are more taxing authorities in each community than just the school district. And these particular figures here are for residents of the City of Marshalltown and residents of the Marshalltown Community School District. So there's all sorts of variations out there, but this would just be your city and school district residents. And you can see the different taxing authorities that make up the consolidated levy rate for those residents. City of Marshalltown, the school district, the college, the state, the Assessor, Ag Extension, and Marshall County. So you can see for fiscal '14 through fiscal '19, those are actual numbers that we can get off of the Department of Management's website. For the fiscal '20 proposed rates for each of these entities, I simply pulled that information from their published budgets. With the exception of the yellow highlighted one, that .029, the state, I have not seen that one yet, but that literally has something to do with cows and tuberculosis, and it never really changes, so.
I didn't know cows with tuberculosis was an issue.
It's something crazy. But for 3,000ths of a cent, I wasn't going to spend too much time on it. So you can see back, you know, like in fiscal '16, that appears out of this timeframe. That was the highest consolidated levy rate for people in the Marshalltown School District and the City of Marshalltown at $42.77. Since that, the last few years, that consolidated levy rate has come down to where it's at. This year, $40.95. What every, all the taxing authorities have published or proposed for fiscal '20, this would make our consolidated tax rate, put our consolidated tax rate at $40.97. So for the consolidated rate, it's about a 2-cent increase for fiscal '19, or fiscal '20. The lower part of that table will just show you the changes that have occurred for each taxing authority over the last several years. So as Dr. Shutey alluded to, back in fiscal '17, the school district actually dropped their rate 36 cents, 35.6 cents. But other, and other entities during that year also dropped their rate. But there was, you know, the City of Marshalltown, for whatever reason, I'm not completely aware of, their rate went up that year. So the consolidated rate overall still went down, but some of those authorities went up and some of them went down. Anybody have any questions so far?
You've got that percentage over on the right that says, "Our share of the total property taxes is 44.7% proposed for fiscal year '20," right? I went back and did the math, and that's a, that's a higher percentage of the total than we've ever asked for in past years. Almost every year was 42% or 43%, now we're 44.7%.
We are proposing a 34-cent rate increase for the school district. That is correct.
And 24 cents of that is a budget guarantee that's directly because of that sharp decline in student enrollment, most of which I think was tornado created.
24 of the 33 cents, that we said?
As a budget guarantee. The next thing I just want to review real quickly is that there are several, several property tax relief provisions within Iowa code. And as a school district with low taxable valuation per student, the Marshalltown School District does get some benefit from these property tax provision, relief provisions. So there's three different things. The Property Tax Equity and Relief Fund, which we call PETER, that is tied to the statewide penny. And some of the money from that statewide penny is set aside instead of divvied out to school districts, and specifically there to buy down districts with low taxable valuation, such as ours. Property tax replacement payment is, has just been around for a few years. That is estimated for fiscal '20 to be at $110 per pupil. And then the third one has been around for a very long time. If we move to the next slide, this will show you the total dollar amount and the impact that it's having on the tax rate in Marshalltown School District. For estimated fiscal '20, the property tax relief from these three provisions is at about $2.5 million. So what that is doing is reducing the property tax rate for the school district by $2.23 for fiscal '20. For fiscal '19, the current year that we are actually in, it reduced our property tax rate by $2.32. The next slide is going to go a little bit deeper into the general fund, since I didn't talk about that much on an earlier slide. The general fund is our main operating fund, and this is where we have our spending authority. So our school finance, our school funding formula is, through this calculation, telling us how we are financing that spending authority. There's several different components of the general fund. Property tax rate, one of, you know, the uniform levy, additional levy, and then there's the budget guarantee of $259,000. That is what equates to that 24 cents, 24 cents out of the 34 cents. There are other, the instructional support levy is in there, that, that rate went down a couple cents. The cash reserve levy, we're going to talk about in an upcoming slide, but this is where a big portion of, of that increase, in addition to the budget guarantee, is coming from, too. So for the general fund, the total increase in the rate within just the general fund So the two big things that are impacting that proposed increase of 34 cents to our tax rate is the budget guarantee of 24 cents. And then the other one has to do with our solvency ratio. Our board policy has a solvency ratio between 8 and 10%. IASB, the Iowa Association of School Boards, they recommend a solvency ratio between 5 and 15%. This is what we use to manage our short and long-term demands on cash. But as you can see from the chart, we were doing, had, you know, pretty stable, six, between 6 and 6.7% there for four years at least. And then in fiscal '18, our solvency ratio dropped to 4.27%. For fiscal '19, the current year that we are in, we are estimating that our solvency ratio is going to be down to about 2.5%. So obviously, well below our, our board policy of 8% minimum. And so what we are trying to do in, over the next several years, is get that solvency ratio turned around and heading back up closer to 5% than 2%. One of the things that impacts that solvency ratio is the cash reserve levy. But if we move over to the other side of that chart, we're going to talk about the fiscal '20 or the fiscal '19 budget, which was this year. So at various times throughout the year, there were, there was board approval for such things as the special ed deficit, which we do in September. And then in December, there's also the SBRC application that gets board-approved, the School Budget Review Committee. We go and we, we ask them for additional authority for programs such as our ELL program beyond five years, our open enrollment out that we're not getting money for this year is, if you remember, the funding is a year behind the students. And so we have kids that are open enrolled out this year for the first time, new to our district, that we didn't get any funding for, so we ask them for the additional authority to pay those bills. So we, at various times of the year, ask for authority to do these things. The cash reserve levy is when we recover that cash, is the means by which we recover that cash to support that authority. I'm, I don't really like the term cash reserve levy because it implies that we're just reserving money somewhere, which really isn't the case. So in fiscal '19, between those three things that we asked for additional authority for that totaled $3.6 million, our actual cash reserve levy for this year was only $3.2 million. So we asked for $400,000 less than we had gotten authority for. What happens when we do that, then, is our fund balance goes down, our solvency ratio goes down. So for the fiscal '20 budget, those same three areas that we have asked for authority for total about $3.7 million. And then, so that 3.7 out of that $4 million is just to support the authority that we've already been granted. The other $322,000 is really what we are asking for to start moving that solvency ratio back up to a little bit higher than 2.5%. Three out of the last five budget years, the district has not levied the same amount of cash as they've asked for the authority for. The next slide, we're going to talk just a little bit about the instructional support program levy. This is one piece of that general fund property tax rate. This program allows school districts to increase their regular program amount by 10% each year. I think every school district in the state utilizes this. It can be used, then, for any general fund purpose. This can either be funded through 100% property tax or a combination of property tax and income surtax. And as mentioned on a previous slide, the district currently does not use an income surtax to fund any part of that program. So out of the $18.33 total property tax rate, the ISL is $1.87 of that, so about 10% of your total tax rate. This program used to be funded by the state, but it has not been since back in fiscal '11.
I think at the finance meeting, we talked about, is it 85% of the districts that have instructional support utilize the income surtax?
That is correct. That is correct. And I think we talked a little bit about instructional support earlier in the year or two. It is, like Dr. Shutey said, it's widely used to fund, fund that program and alleviate some of the, some of the burden on the property tax rate for that program.
So did we, in the finance meeting, did we discuss implementing that? We'd had serious, I know you presented kind of informative in the fall, I think. Have we had further discussions on that?
What it would require is two board meetings, because right now, you can either have your ISL voter-approved for 10 years, or you can do board-approved for five years. The district is currently under a five-year board-approved resolution. That resolution can, is set to expire on June 30th of 2021, but that resolution could be amended at any time by the Board if they chose to do that. It would require a two-board meeting time span because you would have to have a public hearing. So yeah, it can be done.
It's something I favor. I prefer that we implement that. It's used, as you said, in most places, and when people compare property tax rates in one district to property tax rates in another, they don't take that into account.
Right.
And we're leaving that out there if it's an option that we're not taking advantage of.
I think one of the things that we talked about in finance, that an initial implementation may need to supplement what we're currently doing in order to get that solvency ratio where it needs to be quicker. But once it's there, then you get the latitude to potentially back off the property tax askings, you know, for what that's compensating through income surtax. I think our intention would be to, to again, try to talk about it in the fall in anticipation of the next year's budget if we, if the Board wanted to go that direction.
Okay.
So the surtax, however, comes off of an income tax. So whoever the citizens are that pay Iowa tax within Marshalltown, it adds whatever percentage to your income tax asking. So if you're paying $300 in income tax from Iowa, it adds 5%.
It could be anywhere between 1% and 8%.
Whatever we.
Yes, whatever surtax. But yes, you are correct. It's, it's a surtax on your Iowa income tax liability.
So it doesn't cover the same spectrum within the community as a property tax. Because a property tax is businesses, individuals, any property. So it is a little bit different in terms of who it's taxed.
One's taxing property owners and the other is taxing income.
Right.
This slide here, and I actually gave you a printout of that so you could actually see it. This is the fiscal '20 proposed school budget summary, and this is what you would be directing me to go ahead and publish in the newspaper prior to our public hearing that we have set for April 8th. The very bottom box there in the middle is that proposed tax rate, $18.33 per thousand. And then all the numbers above that are, I find this report kind of confusing, actually. This will show you our actual 2018 numbers on the right. The middle column is what we are estimating that we're going to end this year with. And then the left column is our proposed budget for fiscal '20. And then the left column is our proposed budget for fiscal '20. And this takes all of those funds and combines them all together. It also does our revenues by source, and the expenditures are by basically four functional areas, which we're required to report on. Instructional function, we have support services, non-instructional programs, and other expenditures. So that's wrapping all of those funds together and reporting them in that, that way. The other piece of paper that I handed you, and which is the next slide, I find this to be more understandable, because this is the same thing, except this is showing it to you by fund, by your general fund, by your PEPAL, by Pearl. At the, at the left-hand side, we're going to have our fiscal '20 estimated beginning balance. We have our fiscal '20 estimated revenues, expenditures, and then our fiscal '20 estimated ending balance. So like I said earlier, this kind of becomes the framework for our line item budget that we do in the summer and the fall. If you look down the left-hand side, there are three kind of red boxes there. Anything that shows up in a red box means that the fund balance is going down, is proposed to go down over that year. So management, we knew, we cannot sustain asking only for $900,000 in revenues for the management fund. We know that our annual expenditures are about $1.3 million. But as you can see, we had a beginning fund balance of $1.7 million, which is over a year's worth of fund balance. So because we had other things that were impacting the tax rate and increasing it for fiscal '20, we decided to get, to use some of that fund balance in the management fund to offset a further increase in the tax rate. The other fund on there that's, has a projected fund balance going down is the nutrition fund. The nutrition fund does not receive any property taxes. They are a completely separate business-like proprietary fund. And the reason that that is going down is we have some additional estimated health insurance costs that we're budgeting in there. So we're, we're estimating that we're going to start the year with about $11 million in fund balance, and we would end the year with about $10.5 million in fund balance. The most important fund on there, the general fund, you can see this would be projecting about $100,000 increase in the general fund balance.
Got a question for you?
Yeah.
On the PEPAL and the Pearl. You're estimating expenditures for the next year of less than what you have in your estimated beginning balance.
Yes.
Right? And so why do you need to levy virtually a full year's worth of expenditures if you have that much cash sitting in the bank when you start?
This isn't cash, this is fund balance. So cash and fund balance are two different things. What we are trying to do, what, what you typically want to do is establish a desired fund balance for any fund. It's kind of like your solvency ratio.
Mm-hmm.
We want to have a solvency ratio of 5%. So once we get to that desired fund balance, that's where you want to stabilize things, so that your revenues and your expenditures annually are the same. We have had a PEPAL balance. I'm, I'm not sure what's, if it, if that's a board, or dictated balance, or, or what. Some people spend their PEPAL down to absolutely zero.
Mm-hmm.
That is not something I would recommend.
Well, I can understand having, you want to have some money at the end of one year and the beginning of another, but do you need a full year's worth of expenditures at the beginning of the year? That seems like a lot.
It, it depends, and especially when you look at PEPAL and Pearl, we only get those receipts twice a year.
September and March, right? So you got to have some.
Right.
Right? I get that.
So you have to have, it depends when you're doing your projects. You know, if we're doing a bunch of projects during the summer, we're going to have to rely on some fund balance until we get the October.
Yep.
Debt service is a really good example of that, where you, you'll see we have $2.2 million on June 30th in the fund balance. Guess when our debt payments are due?
July 1.
July 1.
Yep.
So it's 2.2 on July, on June 30th, and on July 1, 0.
Yep, sure.
So I, I can't answer exactly what the philosophy has been as to fund balances for PEPAL, sales tax, things like that.
But you, but now, you get to set the philosophy.
Well, I'm, I'm going to suggest and guide.
Oh, and PEPAL has been used a lot just to take care of the day-to-day physical plant needs, some of which have been deferred in lieu of using PEPAL in conjunction with sales tax to take care of, you know, construction projects and things like that. And as you know, Mike, from your work on the facilities committee, part of what we're trying to do is really identify, you know, what are those day-to-day or those annual maintenance-type things, whether it's roof replacements and tuck pointing and parking lot repair, you know, those types of things, and separate that out from the other things which are truly the capital improvement type things. So I'd be leery of moving away until we get that more solidly identified. I think the one thing that we did identify was, you know, we've got a little bit over $1 million of discretionary funds each of the, that aren't committed each of the next, well, probably till 2029 unless the SAVE gets extended to use for, you know, either to, to bank those reserves over time in order to do a more significant project, or to chip away at some smaller projects during that course in time. So I think a year from now, we'll be in a better place in terms of knowing what we truly do need there, once we get those needs and the, the funds better identified.
How many, if you had to estimate, how many dollars of fund balance, how many dollars of fund balance does it take to equal one penny of tax rate? You ever done that math? Can you do that math very easily?
It, it would depend on the fund, because there's a different taxable valuation for the general fund than there is for debt service, PEPAL, and Pearl.
Let's just take the general fund as an example, then. Is there a way to figure that out?
What was your question?
How many dollars of general fund balance equal one penny of taxable valuation?
Well, in the general fund, every $100,000 equals about 9 cents.
Every $100,000 equals 9 cents of taxable valuation. Tax rate. So each penny is about $10,000. Is that another way of saying it? Each ti, okay.
Paula, can you talk about the nutrition again? That's, we're seeing a change.
We are seeing a change there because of offering health insurance to about 30 individuals in the nutrition fund. In the past, they have not been eligible for our insurance, and they are now. So we have to build into the budget, we don't know how many are going to take it.
Okay.
But we're, we're building in some additional expenditures there, because we know that some will take it.
Sure.
Yeah, and I think back to your question, Mike, too. Management fund, PEPAL, sales tax, these, these are all, these would be all June 30th numbers, and our property liability insurance that we pay out of the management fund, that's due July 1st. So that $1.7 million goes down to about $1 million or less the very next day. Same thing, you know, with our PEPAL, we typically do about half a million dollars of projects during the summer that don't get paid for until after July 1st.
And then computers in the fall.
And the computers in the fall. So we have to have money on hand to pay those summer expenses before we get our next property, big property tax payment in October.
So, because it seems to me that the big, the big change here is the cash reserve, right? Our additional levy went down partially because our number of students went down. Budget guarantee makes up for that, plus a little bit more.
Yes.
So it's the cash reserve levy is the, is a primary reason why the tax rate would be going up. That's because of our solvency ratio coming down. So I get all that. How long do you think we would have to continue with that cash reserve levy rate to get to the 5% level?
At this rate, it would take several years.
Okay.
If, you know, there are some other options, if we can move some things around in that tax rate, then we could get there quicker.
And that, that was part of the informal discussion, the finance meeting relative to the income surtax.
But it sounds like this, this general level of tax rate is not a, it's not a one-year thing. It's a multi-year, this is about the level we might expect to be at.
And maybe even a little bit higher.
Yeah. Okay.
And part of wanting to wait till fall as well, with having further discussion on income surtaxes, you know, our enrollment next October will tell us a lot, too. So we're hopeful, you know, as we saw from RSP, their assumptions were that we're going to stay relatively stable with some ups and downs over the next three to five years. But, you know, if that student enrollment tends to grow, if available affordable housing gets back online to help accommodate that, you know, we could have a better situation than we were anticipating, too.
And it's important to note, probably next year, when valuations go down, tax rates are going to go up.
Right. So what's, what's the, what's the worst-case scenario here? Let's say the enrollment doesn't go up, and let's say the, you know, the allowable growth is 1% next year, and we're on budget guarantee for a second year, lower guarantee.
Geez, Ben, don't be so depressing.
And I don't need, I don't need the numbers. I'm just saying, we know that scenario is out there, right? So are we planning for possible, well, at some point, it's not tax rate, right? It's, it's budget reduction.
It's budget reduction.
Right? So, was that discussed at the finance?
If you are on the budget guarantee for two years consecutively, that's when the pain really comes in, because you don't get the benefit of that budget guarantee amount in the second year. So you could potentially have negative new money. And that definitely means reductions, because that's authority. You can, you, we can borrow for cash, but you can't borrow for authority.
So the, I guess me and my question is, if this is the tax rate we're going at next year, and it brings us enough money to sustain for this next year, are we also planning on what the budget has to look like if this is our new normal?
So, so we have a, a five-year projection tool that we use, and we have plugged in some assumptions to there. We've used the enrollment projections from RSP and plugged those in. We've also made some assumptions on allowable growth going forward. And then, one of the big assumptions, you know, like I said, I usually use the five-year average on taxable valuation increase, but I plugged in a negative 2%. And so just with making that change to a negative 2%, just dropping those valuations, the tax rate went up to 1850.
Which is going, I mean, if valuations go down, tax rate goes up. That's just math that we can't really help too much.
Right.
Do the formula, but the, if the budget's staying or lowering, is kind of the scarier part.
Yes.
I mean, they're both bad, but.
And you'll notice in, on the general fund budget here, you know, we're, we're, our framework for the general fund is $65.3 million for next year. We're spending almost $65 million this year, so.
Is there a way, you know, to, to get the real tax impact to a real taxpayer, you've got to take the tax rate and then our average valuation and compare that to the tax rate and the average valuation of our peers? Is, is there some math that you or the Department of Management or ISB does to show sort of that real impact? Because if you looked at the Marshalltown tax rate, you'd say, geez, that looks high compared to Southeast Polk, but Southeast Polk's valuation is crazy high compared to ours. And so an average taxpayer pays the same or maybe even more taxes. And so do you, do you do that comparison to show the public, like, kind of the real impact?
Right. There is, out on the Iowa Association of School Boards website, there is a wealth of information, but they actually have a, a tool out there that property tax owners can go out there and plug in the proposed tax rate and see what the impact would be on, you know, a $100,000 home.
Based on the property tax rate in your town?
Yes, in your town. The, the thing, Josh, can you go back to the slide with the per pupil, per student So the thing, I mean, and we have every district's information at our fingertips, but what is that one? Yep. So if you look at that $173,000, that's a TUMW.
Yep.
They have the lowest valuation backing each student. Take a guess at what their property tax rate is.
The highest.
Nope, it's $14. They don't have a debt service levy, they don't have a PEPAL levy, they don't have a Pearl levy. So they're, they're basically just levying for their general fund and their management.
And so what it makes you...
So there's really not a whole lot of correlation. There is, but it doesn't always hold true. If you look at the 1.4, that's Okoboji, their tax rate is $9.
What it makes you think is, and as, as a board member, what you think is, are we spending the money efficiently? And so if you say, the lowest valuation per pupil in the state is a TUMW, and their levy is four bucks less than ours, what are they doing differently than ours to educate their kids? Are they being more efficient about it? Are, are they providing a better or worse education? And so those are the kind of questions I ask when you say, let's, let's raise it by 1.9%. And so how do I, how do I get at that? How do you tell me, yeah, Mike, we're spending it efficiently, yeah, Mike, we're educating the kids better than they are in a TUMW, or whatever? You know, that's a, don't write that out. My friends in a TUMW will call and yell.
No, I think that, that, that is just to show that...
It's not always apples to apples.
Yeah, it's not always apples to apples. You, you can't say, because they don't have three of the levies in a TUMW that we have. I don't know what the state of their school buildings are, I don't know what the state of, you know, any of their facilities, I don't know what they offer for technology. But in the general fund, the school formula, the school funding formula is such that it equalizes for all school districts. That's why, whether you go to Okoboji, or whether you go to Marshalltown, there's $6,911 backing each student in the general fund. What makes, how we fund that $6,911 between property tax and state aid is highly dependent upon the taxable valuation of the district and the taxable valuation supporting each We get authority to spend about $7,000 on each student. We can't just go out and tax, you know, raise the tax rate $10 so that we have more to spend. you know, raise the tax rate $10 so that we have more to spend on students, because cash reserve levy does not come with authority. Zero authority comes with your cash reserve levy. Your cash reserve levy is basically getting the money back for which we previously received the authority, but it doesn't have any funding behind it.
And the, the spending there was the, what we see every year, the special education deficit, open enrollment.
Yes.
ELL beyond five years.
Yes.
And we, so we basically underfund, we've, we've spent what we've approved you to spend those years, but did not recover all the cash to cover all that for the last couple of years.
Which, why is that? Why didn't we get that?
Because it's tax rate. It impacts your tax rate.
So we just kept it down?
You can do that for a little while, but then your solvency ratio gets low enough and...
And you've got the polar opposite situation where you've got people sitting on all kinds of cash, but they don't have the authority to spend it because they've lost authority with student enrollment decline year after year after year. And that's, you know, the argument that Davenport was making and trying to get the state to agree. We want to spend the cash even though we don't have the authority to do so.
Right.
And they did it anyway, even though they were told, no, you can't do that. And now they've got a serious budget situation, so...
So what we're trying to do is keep the tax rate as low as we can, manage our cash flow, and get our solvency ratio back up. Those are kind of the three things we're trying to do with this budget.
That is right. And we were trying to keep that tax rate at a level that wasn't higher than it was three years ago when it got dropped and...
I mean, to some extent, I feel like we already made this decision when we gave approval to spend $2 million on special education deficit, right? I mean, we, we spent the money.
The decision you had to make is how much cash reserve levy?
Right.
Effectively.
Effective, yeah. Well, I'm saying, yeah, we, we made the decision to spend the money already, knowing that it would have an impact on tax rates for the next year. Pretty sure that comes up when we discuss it. We spend it now, and we tax for it next year, right?
We can't really say no to that.
Well, we could for one more year.
Yeah. So what we're, you know, what we're looking for here tonight is approval to publish the proposed school budget summary that includes a proposed tax rate of $18.33. And the public hearing for this budget will be held on April 8, 2019, at 5:00 PM, which is a special meeting. And at that point, you would have the public hearing and then approval of the budget.
Do you need a motion for that?
Do we have any more questions first? You ready to go? Okay, so I need a motion for that exact thing, for the presentation of the certified bu- budget, and then setting the hearing for April 8 at 5:00 PM by Paul, by the board secretary, so that we may publish that in compliance with the code. Is there a motion in?
So moved.
Second.
Heitman, Fletcher, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries five to zero. Yep.
The next item on the agenda is the proposed dental and vision rates for our plans for next school year, fiscal '20. We've been working closely with Mark Becker, who's our benefits consultant with our health insurance, as you're fully aware. After we've kind of got that decided, we moved on to the, the dental plan. And our dental plan has been running at about 118% loss ratio since 2014, so we knew that there was some increases that were needed there also. One of the great things that was done a year ago for our dental plan was they, they implemented a lifetime maximum for orthodontics. Previously, there was no maximum for orthodontics, so they did make that change a year ago, which will help move the trend of, of the plan, hopefully, but still are recommending a 13.7% increase in rates for next year. So our single dental plan would go from $33 a month to $37.52 a month, and the family would go from 94 to 10688. The recommendation that you have before you is following the same guiding parameters that we used with the health insurance, that all eligible employees receive the same benefit, equal benefit. The district would pay for single dental coverage for those eligible, and the single dental amount towards family coverage if they so elect family coverage. And then the district will pay for, for the vision plan. We are a fully insured group. We are not self-insured. So we don't get to set the rates for our vision plan. Those rates come to us, and that, we are in year one right now of a two-year contract with them. So fiscal '20 will be the same rates, and then we're just proposing that the, the premium cost share is a little bit different for those in order to make these two plans budget neutral. So we're presenting or proposing that the district would pay 50% of single vision coverage for those eligible, and the same amount towards family coverage if elected. And then one of the things that we're going to do for next year is investigate putting, making eye exams a benefit of our health insurance coverage, and then maybe reevaluating what we have for the vision materials hardware coverage. And then the bottom table there, you can see what the current year cost sharing is for the different classifications in the district. So, you know, a certified employee currently pays $8 a month for single. A 10-month secretary pays $33 a month for single. Next year, either one of those classifications would receive that single coverage at no cost.
Does anybody have any questions, concerns?
When they're doing the education activities, is the changes to the medical, is there anything here that needs to be covered as well for the employees and the, of the district?
This would be something that we could work into the building level meetings, I think. But I have not received any questions on dental or vision. They've all been on health.
And the, the, this is, I mean, there's no plan change here, right? It's, it's a premium change, but you're not, not changing...
Right. There is no plan design change.
Deductibles or benefits or anything?
Other than evening out the cost of the...
Right.
Yeah, the, the major plan design change for the dental was made a year ago.
Okay.
We have an hour max on, was that March 25th?
25th, Monday.
Out of that professional development day, which I think we're going to need all of that time to talk about health insurance. And then as Paula mentioned, the plan is between then and, you know, essentially during the month of April, to make sure we have building level meetings with smaller groups in order to particularly Q and A with people, which that hour's not going to be conducive to a whole lot of questions. We'll probably be able to handle some, but for the most part, a lot of that will happen there. So I think it probably will be better to have this during that time.
Are there any other questions on the dental and vision proposal? May I have a motion to approve the proposed dental and vision insurance rates and cost sharing as presented?
Move for approval.
Second?
Second.
Miller, Fletcher, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries five to zero. All right, we're on to policies.
Paula, do you have a comparison like you did for the medical, compare dental and vision?
I do, within the information that Mark and his team have shared, they have done the benchmarking. I didn't do the big spreadsheet that I shared with you.
Yep.
I didn't do that for dental. I just did that for health.
Okay.
All right, we are on to the first reading.
So we're going to try to group these together by common themes. And so 405.2, Licensed Employee Qualifications Recruitment and Selection. We had adjusted that policy, made a simple sentence change in order to do a recommendation from IASB based on the new collective bargaining law. And then there's a series of policies here. 405.5, Licensed Employee Work Day. 405.6, Licensed Employees Assignment, Licensed Employee Assignment. 50405.7, Licensed Employee Transfers. 50405.8, Licensed Employee Valuation. And what was 406.3, but is now the new 408.1, Licensed Employee Professional Development. All of those had essentially the same change, which was to strike language referencing, referring to the master contract once again, as a result of the new collective bargaining law. So I would recommend, all of those are as they appeared to you at the last meeting during the review. I would recommend a approval and waiving the second reading on those.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve 405.2, 405.4, 405.6, 405.7, 405.8, and the new 408.1 policies to approve as read and waive the second reading?
Move for approval.
Second.
Miller, Heitman, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
In the next wave, there were three policies, all of which were, Sean had 704.5 tuition fees, 705.3 requisition and purchase order, and 705.4 receiving supplies and equipment that we were recommending deleting. And we are, still would recommend deletion and waiving a second reading on those.
Okay, may I have a mo- any questions? I have, may I have a motion to delete 704.5, 705.3, seven, what was the same? Seven, oh, 70, is that right? 705.3, there's two of them.
One's a regular.
There's a new, that's a new one.
Seven, okay. And 705.4 for deletion and waive the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Harris, Harris, Miller, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Do you want to cover the remaining two?
New 705.3 is the IASB model policy. It hasn't changed since it was presented last meeting. And 705.3R is our current policy. The deletions there relate to reimbursement for sales tax and tipping. And those are the same changes that were in their last meeting, so...
Okay, so may I have a motion to adopt 705.3, and Mark has amended 705.3R and waive the second reading? Is that correct? Did I get that right?
Yep.
So moved.
Second.
Harris, Fletcher, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
So 201, Board of Directors' Elections. 201.6, which will now, or new number, 202.3, Term of Office. 202.1, old, which will now become the new 204. These are all policy amendment and adjustment recommendations made by the Iowa Association of School Boards. Those will come back. And we did earlier adjust the Board of Directors' Elections, but the language wasn't exactly what IASB is recommending. So these all come back to you for a first reading at the next meeting with those adjustments. And then we've got some recommended deletions, which would come back to you to be fully deleted. We've got 203.6 on legal counsel, because we're looking to adopt a new policy relative to that. We've got 705.5, Approval and Painting of Goods and Services, that was one of Mike's. 705.6, Unpaid Warrants, which was one of Mike's. 705.7, Special Assessments. We've got 705.8 Insurance Program, because we're also promoting adopting a new, a new policy on that that would be IASB. So 705.8, we're requesting be deleted. And then 705.8, R, Insurance Program Regulation. Most of those fell under Mike's review, but those were all recommending for deletion.
Okay, those will have to come back.
Those will come back. We've got a new policy for 207, Board of Directors' Legal Counsel, so that's replacing the one that we're going to be recommending be deleted. We've got another new policy, Limitations to Employment References, that IASB recommends that we did not have. 401.6. Anthony, I don't know if you wanted to cover the policies that you reviewed. We've got a few more that were part of the collective bargaining law changes. So 409.3, Licensed Employee Family and Medical Leave. I think that one was amended in order to...
Yeah, that one was amended to reflect current practice.
And then 409.8, Licensed Employee Unpaid Leave. There were no changes, I don't think, made to, recommended for that one. So I think that one, we can just mark as reviewed.
Which one was that one?
409.8.
Okay.
And 412.4, Annuities Classified. This one, we made some adjustments to align with IASB as well. And 705.1 was kind of an oops. Josh had at one point requested that we add some language to help accommodate the timing relative to E-rate. And then I think when we reviewed it, we accidentally deleted that new language that had been put in, so we need to re-insert that language. And I think the only other one under Mike was the new policy for 709 on insurance program. And that is an IASB recommended change, so that would come back for a second reading.
Which one was that one?
709.
709. So... So everything will come back on that list except for 409.8, which will be marked as reviewed. Is that correct? We don't give a vote on that, right?
No.
We got rid of one.
I think with, in addition to these ones that come back, I think the next person, I can't remember who that is.
I'm off.
We moved things ahead because B is gone. I think there's just three new policies to review, and then Anthony's planning on continuing to bring two to three policies each meeting that are directly related to the collective bargaining bill, the new collective bargaining bill and the recommendations that have been made through that. And we timed that out with making those changes in the spring in conjunction with going into the new contract year for July 1st.
Okay, any communications, Andrew? So for reminders, it looks like I'm up for policies next time. We have an internal communication meeting on a week from Friday. School Board Visit with Gavin Altus, is that correct?
Yep.
On 3/27, and our next meeting is April 1st. See, Committee Reports, Ben, did you go to SIAC?
Yeah, yep, went to SIAC. It was building off of what we'd done last time around visioning future-ready students, kind of what that might mean for the district. So, it's a lot around thinking about competencies and capabilities of what might be future. I don't know if this could probably explain a little better, maybe what the, what's, what's we're going to take from that? Thoughts?
Right, so on the Bobcat Ready symbol, the students are getting on their transcript that's behind Ben. We have the College and Career Indicators, and the group is working this year with Andrea from the center to talk about what life, life-ready indicators would be. So what we spent most of our time on was reviewing, I think there were three different sample...
There was Iowa Core, and then there was some kind of outside other education groups.
So we're trying to narrow it down to a handful or so of life-ready indicators, and then how we would measure those for students as they measure our system to balance out the college and career readiness. And we need to get in May to keep working on it.
I think going back to Gavin Altus at Miller, that'll be to take a look at the App Creator course. That's the new course, your project lead the way there.
So heads up on that one. I see we did have a finance meeting last week, but we pretty much knocked that one out. And then there was an Acer meeting this morning. Do you want to talk about that a little bit?
Ooh, I forgot to bring my notes on that. Yeah, so we had the intergovernmental meeting this morning. Pretty much, I think everyone, I think our county engineer was unable to, to be there, but that was kind of understandable given what they're dealing with, with the receding of the flooding and dealing with some of the difficulties of the gravel roads, which is why we've gone to hard surface only with our buses until further notice. And Janelle filled in for B admirably, so she's provided some notes here as well. The county talked a lot about, relative of the courthouse, particularly looking at FEMA dollars for the, the repairs and renovations and that sort of thing. As a result of the tornado recovery, I think it was mentioned that they're kind of sort of targeting now, it could be like September, October, before the courthouse is fully usable, and they're working with architects and hoping to bring that to closure as far as internal renovations.
Just working on plans, actually.
For that. Mayor Greer was there and talked about the Coliseum fundraising effort. And then we had, Kim Schwartz was there representing Central Rivers AA. She was talking about how the Pool Foundation, which has always been a partner with the AA relative to the swimming pool at what was formerly known as Pleasant Hill, now that foundation's taking over sole responsibility for the pool, and so they've got some good ideas for how they're reaching out to other entities to make it more accessible throughout the community. I know the Veterans Home was mentioned as one of those ways. Dr. Lilienthal was here from the college, talked about the upcoming bond referendum there, and how they've gone through their accreditation visits, so in May they'll go before the State Board of Education relative to that, and how I think in the latter part of the month, they'll be doing, providing open forums with the candidates that are chosen to be finalists for the chancellor position.
There were going to be some open meetings in the mornings at some point. That might be in the paper.
We talked a lot about our certified budget from the school district's standpoint, also promoted Roundhouse Phase Two grand opening at that meeting, and talked a little bit about some of the changes that we're working towards with plan design and rates with health insurance, schools dental and vision. Lynn Oberding was there, and she mentioned that we'll have a State of the Schools breakfast on April 24th at a site yet to be determined, that the chamber will be sponsoring. So we'll get that information out to you once that's set. The school district and Marshawn Community College will be working together on that presentation, which will be focused primarily on our efforts towards creating work-based learning experiences for our students going forward. Iowa State University Extension was represented. They talked about a lot of excitement around some of the programming they're doing around agriculture, and also how their gardening, club efforts are really building out across the district, our district as well as in other places, and Marshalltown Water Works wasn't represented at the meeting. But it was about an hour meeting, I think, and our next meeting of that group will be on June 17th.
17.
Which is a board meeting date, so.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, what have we done for kids today? Silence. I'll just say that the education section of our board docs was bigger than the finance section, believe it or not. So I think that's a good thing.
I don't know if they had as much ear time, but I'm just kidding.
Yeah, I like the, the, the growth, I guess, of the project-based learning at Miller. Interested in, I guess, seeing how that, how it continues to change, and the, I forget the name of the club, exactly what they, the medical careers club, Health Careers Club, is always good to see. It seems like it's a...
That just keeps growing too. That's been great.
Yeah.
Well, and setting a vision for the future with the digital learning plan as well.
Okay, my quote for tonight is by Henry David Thoreau. You've probably heard this before. "What you get by achieving your goals is not as important as what you become by achieving your goals." So with that, we will, may I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Yep.
Second.
Miller, Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.